Good evening, everybody. Welcome to November 7th study session. My first thing is I hope everybody has voted. If not, you have until 7:00 PM tomorrow night. There are over 30 places in the county of Jeffco. I don't know how many in Adams you can vote. So free busing tomorrow for anybody that rides the bus so that you can get your ballots to where they need to be, or you can get to a voting place to vote. I will be at my voting place at 6:00 AM until the last person has voted. So we're going to get this show rolling. Council reports.
So I went to Westminster. What was that, Thursday? That was great to see so many people out there. How many of you? So glad to see that it's still alive and well. And actually, it felt like there were more from a year before. Forgot my notes, but I had more notes coming in on the Dr. Cog in a work session. The two things that they talked about were the DDA, which is the, or the E Economic Development District that we could be applying for within the, for the region overall. It would be all of our municipalities joining in, creating an economic development plan. And the benefit of doing that would be that it helps us access some federal dollars to, and we would leverage that regional plan. And that could even help local requests for funding and matching funding and beyond just economic development. And it could include things for housing or transit as well. So the Dr. Cog team, staff team, is evaluating the sort of cost benefit side of this. And that's important because it would take some additional monitoring and tracking and on behalf of that staff. So I don't know if that would impact our, you know, any of our funding obligations over time. But yeah, they're looking at it to just give us, and they're looking at January, coming back to the board and giving us a yea or nay on whether they recommend that we move forward on it. So that's that. And then they're also looking at a overall health services. Sorry, if I have my notes, I would remember the right acronym and name for this. I can come back next time and give you a little more detail, but, or the more accurate name. But essentially, it's a health services collaborative that would help connect the whole region to a variety of vendors that would join into this collaborative and provide some fixed pricing and help expand services. So the overall, the team sees that as a benefit. So it's probably something that we'll go into as a region.
June, your team, you, I'm sure they know about everything.
We'll dig into that.
Jennifer.
Had a few things last week. I attended the Stanley Lake High School Political Science Fair, and congratulations to them on a pretty fun event. It was pretty neat. All the kids were super engaged. And I know there were several of us there who got to help judge the different presentations. So that was a lot of fun to get to participate. Then I also went to the Taste of Westminster, participated in our first lobbyist interview with the mayor and the team. That was my week, not too much.
I basically spoke with one, well, okay. I mean, the chairman of the Rocky Mountain Airport Noise Council. And it should be a very interesting meeting on Monday. And if anyone wants to have any guidance or advice from me, I'd be more than happy to listen to what you have to contribute. As because, I mean, that'll be Monday morning.
It looked like you were deep in thought.
I am trying to, we all thought I did last week because I was also out of town. I joined in the Political Science Fair at my alma mater, Stanley Lake High School. I hope that they continue that tradition for every election cycle just because I think it was a great opportunity for not only our students, but parents and community members to get involved. And it was really a phenomenal experience to be a part of. So thank you to the high school for allowing us to participate in that. And then on Wednesday, we went to Frolic for the Police and Fire fundraiser that they have on the first Wednesday of every month. And it was an amazing turnout. So please join the next Wednesday in December. It's the first Wednesday of every month at Frolic. And I believe it starts at five or six. But it was a great turnout from just all walks of life to join in.
And even if you order takeout, that counts towards the 10% they give the alumni. And they never skip to either of the alumnis during all of COVID. They reinvented themselves 10 times and never ever hiccuped.
So that was a great event. I missed the Taste of Westminster. Love that event. I was out for work and, but I was able to come back soon enough for the craft fair at the MAC, which was also phenomenal turnout. And thank you to everyone involved in putting that together and advertising for it. I think it really paid off this year. There was a lot of people and a lot of booths. It was in every room, no can granny in the MAC. It was really great to see. So lots of people came out for that as well. So, oh, and then, sorry. And then I partake in the Historic Landmark Board on Wednesday. And the board is working on obtaining city designation for Harris Park and Union Schools. So that might be coming to council here in the coming months.
Monday, the 31st, Rocky Flats Stewardship Council. It was a quarterly meeting and working on the legacy management program. So we got updates from, very brief updates. Instead of taking three, four hours to do water plumes and soil samples and how far the slump is and how many elk and all of that. So we, we talking about other issues. Several of the surrounding cities had sent a letter to David Abelson, the executive director of that, requesting that the stewardship council support air quality testing. So that letter was signed on by mid, mid-quarter. And we ratified this meeting that the stewardship council signed on that. So that letter is going to EPA and Department of Defense, who manages the legacy part of that. So, and then the council reaffirmed two of the public members that are part of that council. It's mostly elected officials, but there's a resident of Candellas that backs up to Rocky Flats. And then the Rocky Flats Homesteaders Group that, or the museum that keeps a lot of the history of Rocky Flats. So those were affirmed. Tuesday at the Political Science Fair with fellow counselors, that was fantastic. I made some intern offers to a couple of them.
Paid, of course.
Paid, of course. So now I gotta budget that. So, so I was handing out business cards, trolling for employees. So, and interns for other things. But, so that was fantastic night. Wednesday evening, I attended as part of the Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation Board. They had their gateways dinner recognition, recognized some fabulous Jefferson County businesses, small startups, environmentally sustainable groups. All three of the finalists in each one of the five categories was amazing. And they did a great job doing, interviewing them and talking about what they, what they do in the county. So that was, that was a great evening. And then I went to this taste and could barely, I should have walked home. I had so much food. So that was that week.
I went to a whole lot of events, but the one I'll talk about is that political council. I think that's to echo Councilor Emmons. That's something that I wish, I don't know who said that actually. Was that, okay. It's a really, that's a really good program. And that's, it just felt really good to be there and to see the young people engaged and active and interactive with us and asking us questions. So that was really cool. Wish we could do more, more of that.
I forgot one is the craft fair. And I wanted to bring it up because I wanted to give kudos to the Parks and Recs Department employees who put that on. And I spoke to several of them. And the passion that they have about that event is pretty amazing. And I shared with the mayor when I dropped by her booth that I had to search for a while to get a parking space. I haven't seen it that busy in some years. So it was really great to see the MAC so vibrant and bustling with folks there to buy crafts and goods and sugar.
Devil's candy. He really helped sell my work, you know? This is the devil's candy.
I too went to the political fair. Boy, they, I would wish that was replicated every place in the United States. It was fantastic. And reading what, what these kids had to do was contact a candidate. And they worked in pairs of two to four. They gave, some of them did like both people running for assessor or treasurer or whatnot. So they had the two people, the pros and the cons, what each person stood, they just did fantastic work. And it was hard to judge because they were just all good. It was Proposition 125 and that display that took first place. And it was fun. But it was just, to see that much energy in that school at all of the different booths, it was just fantastic. So kudos to them. I met and some of our officers, I don't know who she is. Came to the meeting with Westminster High School. There'll be online community meeting for the area that they cover and, and Mapleton, they're joining courses with them. Good conversations about recent crime, the parties that have been happening or shootings have been happening. And just having a candid conversation with parents of, do you know where your kids are at 3:00 in the morning? And what they might be doing? So we have that. The meeting, the community meeting starts at 5:30. We'll have it set up. I'm not sure where, I don't remember. It's been a crazy week. But we'll be in the rec center at 5:30. We can all watch it. Anybody that wants to watch it, I'm, I'm watching it, but you're all welcome to come so that we can just listen to that. And then we go upstairs for the graduation of police alumni. Then the MAC craft show, I've never sold out of so much stuff, but it was amazing. And then the arts group down there had a brochure ready to go. And it had all about hometown Christmas, December 2nd. I talked until I couldn't even talk on Saturday night and handed out everything Becky gave me and called up and said, it was 11:30. And I said, I'm out of literature, but these people want to hear about this. I had from 60-plus years living here to brand new people talking to me. And they just gobbling this stuff up, the 60-plus years living there, never knew all this stuff happened down there. So even I had one of the MAC people come by and say, gosh, you're a real ambassador and you're selling stuff besides. But it's too good of a show to not tell about. So it was great. And I want to thank city manager for coming with us to Frolic. People really appreciated that. Taste of Westminster, I did, for the first time, take brittle to taste. And I wanted something else, so I had little cards ready to go. So Police Department, you have to come in here for a minute, somebody. Yoohoo. I have to handle something.
She's coming.
I had, anybody that came to my booth, I said, I have cards. And I would love for you to write a note to our police department. I have read them. There was not one bad thing in there. There are some that looked like maybe a five to seven-year-old might have written it, and they did.
Gracie wrote one.
All levels of the spectrum. And we just wanted to say thanks to the police department. And that's heartfelt notes to all of you.
I will pass them along. Thank you very much, Mayor.
City manager's report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, counselors, ladies and gentlemen. Just wanted to bring a slight update for the, for the council. I'm going to use a presentation to do this. I think it will help guide the update. So if you direct yourself to the slides. First thing I wanted to provide was a quick city update. And so I sent the council a note today, but the city has selected SGR, Strategic Government Resources, to serve as our national recruiter for the police, the permanent police chief position. And so we notified the police department staff. We've notified our executive leaders, and I certainly notified the council. And so after talking with them on Friday, they'll begin reaching out to different user groups and starting to collect data and information for the kind of police chief that are officers, our professional staff, our community, and the city team as a whole are interested in seeing to be the next leader. And so we're really excited about that now, taking some tangible step forward. And so I appreciate the staff certainly helping us to get to this point. Next thing, city improved safety profile. So SERSA Risk Control Staff conducted a safety inspection. We do that each year of city facilities. And they look at life safety systems like fire control, sprinklers, emergency egress lighting, et cetera. This year, the city made some significant improvements, improvements by about 39%. So we were at 156 areas needing improvement in 2021. We're down to 95. So we've still got work to do, but we're heading in the right direction. And so appreciate everybody's work on that. That's important, not only for our city employees, but also the public who participates and operates in those facilities. Next slide. And then we rolled out as a city, the new sales tax system today. And that was a system called Gen Tax. And this is the first time in the city's history, over 3,000 Westminster businesses will be able to update account information file and pay their returns, view past returns, current balance information, et cetera. And so as of 1:00 today, 653 businesses had logged on to the site. 27 of them had already filed their sales tax return, which are due later this year. And so congrats to Deputy City Manager Larry Door and his finance team and the city as a whole for all the great work that they did to get that to this point. So that's a significant improvement for our customer service. And then water supply update, November 1st, when this is the beginning of the non-irrigation season or storage season. And so just because everyone seems to be interested in Stanley Lake and the water levels there, it's, we're at 93%. And that seems to be typical for this time of year. And so those are a couple of city updates. Next slide. Yes.
For the tax system, what kinds of outreach was done to roll that out?
Good question. And I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Door to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Yes, we had an outreach of postcards. We sent email blasts. And I just need to give kudos to this entire team now that I have the chance to do that. Representatives from our city clerk's office, information technology and finance. And last but not least, our Economic Development Department was very instrumental in helping us share the news. We did provide some technical information. I think we've got a couple of members, maybe even around this table, with login IDs and such like that, who can now see their accounts. We purposely rolled this out a couple of weeks before taxes are due here on November 21st. So users can get the hang of what the system looks like, check their, their login IDs and passwords. But I think we did at least two postcard mailers. We did one half-pager that we sent separate. We tried to pace those out, and we got pretty good responses. We had folks calling in, you know, inquiring about the bag fee that was coming up and whether the system would handle it. Also had call-ins about, that's the statewide bag fee, to be clear, and also the statewide delivery fee and whether or not that would be present on our system. So that allowed us to get some good interactivity with not all 3,000 businesses in Westminster, but a real good number. And I think as evidenced by the logins today on Monday, the 7th, a couple of weeks before taxes are due and folks would otherwise be looking at the system, shows that we, we drew in a pretty good, a pretty good audience from that outreach. So kudos to Economic Development was really our arm of outreach. And the tax folks focused on the returns and, you know, all of those nuts and bolts in the process. So thank you for the recognition. It was, it's just a really important time for our city, for those businesses, and this team did a really great job going into it. So it's a good outreach.
See, thanks.
And there was no way to miss them in the mail.
No. Oh, good.
They were neon and stuck out, and you go, oh. And so my second one just came. I have not had time to put my stuff in, but I had two emails while I was judging today that I saw come through saying to say thank you tonight. That it's wonderful and to all of council for saying yes for spending the money.
Indeed.
Same, you cannot, you could not miss those postcards. And it worked out great. And it was easy to log in and set up an account. So good job to everybody.
Thank you. To beat the dead horse, I, I appreciate it too. And I think that the pre-notification that we saw, I know I saw it multiple times. And then the bright orange postcard certainly couldn't miss. So good job.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, something that we'll talk about every time is a Westie win. These are great things happening in our community. So Boo at the View drew over 4,000 visitors, pretty cool. That was an affordable, family-friendly event at the Westview Recreation Center. It included trunk or treating, hayrides, crafts, yard greens, and golf. And so just a great win for the community. And then for the, the city team specifically celebrated on Wednesday, you know, staff who went above and beyond to serve the community. We had 46 employees across eight departments were awarded a Teams in Action Award for their efforts to address homelessness and other quality of life issues, as well as supporting mentorship programs, such as the lawn enforcement program, which is the Police Department's Youth Outreach Program. And so, you know, city team doing great things in Teams in Action. Next slide. And then some things to know, really calendar kinds of things. So tomorrow, 7:00 to 10:00 PM, Planning Commission, right here. City Hall Inclusivity Board, Wednesday, 6:00 to 7:30. That's a virtual Teams meeting. PR and L Open Space Board, that's Thursday, November 10th, 6:00 to 8:00. That's a Teams meeting. Friday, Front Range Community College is hosting a Veterans Day ceremony. That will be from 9:30 to 11:30 AM at the college. And they've asked me to be the speaker for that event. And so looking forward to that and hope that folks will be able to come out and help celebrate that, that holiday. Honor the Land and Streams Cleanup, that's Saturday, November 12th, 8:00 to 11:00 citywide. The Leaf Pumpkin and Tree Limb Recycling is Saturday, November 12th, 8:00 to noon at Brow. Am I saying that right? Brow Property. And then Holiday Pottery Sale, Saturday and Sunday. That's November 12th and 13th, 10:00 to 4:00 at the City Park Recreation Center. And then our next city council meeting is Monday, the 14th, 6:30, right here at City Hall Council Chambers. Next slide. And for the community that is listening in or watching or will watch, we encourage you to please reach out and contact us. The city manager's office is 303-658-2006. Or you can email me directly at mfritig@cityofwestminster.us. If any questions, that's all I have this evening. Yes, counselors.
When will we as a group talk about what we're looking for for a police chief?
Yes, and so a couple of opportunities. So one of the things that will happen here in the next couple of weeks, we'll have, you know, a survey that will go out to different user groups. The council will certainly be part of that to provide commentary on an individual basis. When we get into the, and that's just to build the recruitment profile. Once we build the recruitment file, we take, folks will have public opportunities for engagements. We really haven't thought about, is that going to be survey-driven? Is that going to be like a reception-driven? You know, that sort of thing. But what kind of interaction will the council, along with members of the public, members of the city staff, have with the candidates when we finally get there? But still a little early to kind of define what that looks like. But we recognize that we have, you know, various user groups that are going to need to provide perspective to develop the recruitment profile and then likewise to do the, the actual interview process.
So we're not going to have anything, just in terms of a discussion?
As a council as a whole was not planning on it at this point.
No.
I guess why would we be didn't put a police chief, not our employee, or sorry, the fire chief? He or she would not be our employee.
It's just a big, yeah, recruitment, and so.
Yeah, I understand that.
Billy, would you like to have something?
I would, I, you know, yeah, I'd appreciate it. I know it's important to not just me, multiple people, so.
I guess we should let that precedent then with fire.
My, my opinion is, is no, we shouldn't be directing that. That's a very clear charter thing that's up to the city manager. If there's feedback that you'd like from us, I'd be happy to, you know, provide any feedback that you want. But it's, there's, to me, in my opinion, it's very clear delineation that that's your responsibility if you want feedback. Obviously, that's something that you would decide. One area that I am curious, as far as like user groups, if you're going to have them participate, is the inclusivity board, because there was a citizen-led, there's a, can't think of his name off the top of my head, a gentleman from that group who has been participating in the citizen group with the chief for some period. He was working with former Deputy Chief Todd Reeves when outreach started with that group, I think, back in the summer of 2020. So I think it would make sense that that group, you know, at least provides the feedback that they've been providing, or at least it would be useful maybe for you to talk to that individual in that group, just because I know there's a lot of work that they did around that with inclusivity board and just all things that have went on with the national narrative in policing in our city.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And I think that, you know, over these next, call it three weeks of November, this is really the opportunity to get that recruitment profile out there. And then, you know, over the month of December, hopefully by early January, we've got the recruiter, you know, starting to cull through the candidates, the applicants. And then, you know, with some luck, do some initial Teams interviews, distance with candidates by, call it the end of January, beginning of February, and then you bring people on board for interviews by the end of February at the latest. And so that would, on that time schedule, and I realize that's aggressive, I get that, is, you know, getting somebody on board here no later than, if they had a 60-day, like I did, requirement, you know, that would put you at the 1st of May at the absolute latest. So that's kind of timeline, what we think would be important.
I appreciate that, Dave. And what's the application for the, the, when is it going to be open?
Well, you know, we haven't locked that in with the recruiter, but I would say advertised. I mean, right now, it's on their website, SGR's website, is coming soon. So anybody who's out there looking for a, a police chief opportunity is going to see that and know that there'll be an application window opening soon. But I would expect by about the 1st of December after Thanksgiving.
So the public will have three weeks, but that three, that three-week period of time to give their input?
Yes.
Via what?
Some kind of survey.
We're still very much ironing up.
Some kind of survey, you know, that you can go online and provide feedback.
And you'll have internal folks, will they also, so folks internally who may want to apply for that? Do they get first steps, or is it open for everyone at the same time?
Open for everybody at the same time. So it's a true external application window and opportunity. Anything else? That's all I have, man.
Okay. Information items, we're moving these up just to make sure people do know that they're out there and not at the bottom of things you read and never really look at them. So anything on the water supply?
Yes, we did want to invite up interim Public Works Director Sarah Borges to provide just a brief update. I think the council is probably spun up, but I know that the listening public may or may not be, and so we want to certainly make sure everybody's on the same sheet of music. So Sarah, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. It's great to be with you once again. I'm going to read, if that's all right, a prepared statement, so I don't miss anything. We wanted to make sure to bring your attention to an informational item in your packet that provides additional background information regarding the ongoing Semper project. We understand that there may be significant interest from the community about this project. This informational item is intended to provide the community with an overview of the history and current status. For those who may be interested, recordings of the April 11th, May 23rd, and June 20th public council meetings regarding the water treatment plan project are available on the city's YouTube page, so that's available for anyone to log in and listen to what's already been discussed in public meeting. These meetings provided an opportunity for staff to present information to council and receive feedback regarding direction, and that was an interactive process that resulted in a number of feasible, cost-effective scenarios for a simple, a Semper solution. Parallel to discussions around the Semper project, staff provided opportunities with council to evaluate and identify the 2023 water rates. And those water rates that council adopted accounts for funding needs of all but one of the scenarios that were, were being considered and include inflationary costs with current market inflation that we've been seeing. Some information that's been shared with council is pertinent to ongoing legal proceedings, and as such, can't be shared publicly at this time. That said, it is expected that those proceedings will come to resolution at the end of the year. For council's awareness, staff is preparing to, for presentations and discussions with city council in public meeting, so that, just to make sure that we're prepared to make sure the public is fully engaged and aware of what's, any progress that might be made. And we're prepared to ensure members of public, yeah, the ego off script and then bad things happen. We're expecting that the next interaction with city council will be in mid-December. The court case is scheduled for middle of December, so we are expecting a ruling on that pretty soon after that. We'll be sure and update you as soon as we are aware of that, but I wouldn't anticipate, it'll take us a little bit to get through it before we can get back in front of you for a public meeting, if that's what you choose to do. So we're prepared and ready to move forward as council would like us to.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. Council Baker?
Are we going to have a detailed line-by-line presentation of the costs of each of the alternatives?
Have we already done that?
So we'll have, so yes, we can get into detail on what is included with those. I think there's one exception to that with one of the options that may be sensitive. But yes, we'll, we'll have plenty of detail available for city council.
It would be helpful to that point to have the model, the financial model back up again to be able to use. And then one tiny suggestion is maybe in these information items, or maybe on the website or both, to just have links to the, to the meetings that you're referencing, so it's easy for people.
It's great feedback, yes, we should definitely do that.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
And then the other two items where there were information-only items, and that was number two, the police department ammunition overview, and also in your materials was the monthly workforce report for September. And so if there are no questions on those, we can move on to presentations.
Anything on that? Yes?
In the information thing on the ammunition, besides the Hague Convention, it was an exact duplicate of what we had received in an email. So there was no additional information. There were no pros and cons of choices. There was, there was no additional information.
Yeah, I, I don't know what was done previously. It was certainly informational to me. You know, in my experience, pros and cons isn't necessarily, you know, what you're looking for when you're providing an information update. You're simply providing, you know, factual information. And so I don't, I don't know how we got to this point. I just know what the product was that, you know, the staff prepared. But the police chief is available if there are, you know, further questions that, that the council wanted to ask. But I did not see an information memo, you know, going into pros and cons, because when you're looking at pros and cons, you're looking at various courses of action, you're looking at, you know, you know, what's good, what's bad, why is it bad, why is it good, et cetera? And I didn't see that as being part of an information package, if you will.
Well, really, maybe, maybe, really, Mr. Andrews can tell us what was additional in that information thing from your, like, previous email. Was there anything added to it?
Or I think we can have our, I believe our police chief is coming in, and we'll be able to answer that for you, Council Baker, if you don't mind.
Welcome.
Thank you.
It's like magic, you appear.
Say your name and bang.
Working all day.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilors, Norm Hubbard, interim chief. And, Councilor, just to answer your question, really, it was, it was kind of not at the direction of what Mark is indicating, but that it was an informational item to give more information. I don't know that council had everything last time, but as it relates to the pros and cons, I would have taken direction as, as that being, we're headed down this way, or this is a decision, we think, what are the pros and cons? And so that's why I didn't address pros and cons specifically.
Well, I mean, that's, really, that is the information I would like to have. I would like to have pros and cons. I would like to have who made this decision. Was it made by council? Was it made by the, really, police department? Was it made by the city manager? And I would like pros and cons.
Council, you come on. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, and I think there is, there is a statement in the background information in the last sentence of the second paragraph that really talks to the, the fact of why we don't use full metal jackets in, other than in practice rounds, and it is, they routinely, routinely overpenetrate most targets, and this can be extremely dangerous in the real world application of these, and, and for those innocent bystanders behind the target. So to me, that, and, and the fact that these are tested, and this is, you know, standard operating procedure for most law enforcement. So to me, that, that's the information that I needed.
And to me, it says on the third, fourth bullet, PD follows federal guidelines for law enforcement ammunition. That made it for me.
I was pretty strongly stated about my beliefs on this before, but to be thorough, I tried to look and find other departments in Colorado who don't use the same kind of ammunition, and I couldn't find any, and I did some other research, some of personal. I had a conversation with my dad, as you all know, who's retired Denver, and he shared with me the history of when Denver started carrying it. When he was a cadet, the Denver Police Department actually marched on the Capitol because they had a situation with the officer who lost his life after using several rounds on a suspect who still took that officer's life, because at the time, they were not allowed to use the kind of ammunition that we use, because there is, as I mentioned before, I know that there's a stopping power component of it, but there's also a, doesn't go through the target component of it. So those two things, the officers at the time basically said enough's enough. We need to be able to use this ammunition to provide safe people for themselves and the community. So it's not like this is a new thing in my mind. It's been a long road, I think, for the law enforcement community from the research I did. But I did want to at least do some more research besides what I knew at the time. So those were the things I came up with, and I'm still comfortable that you use that. And plus, to me, this is a decision that you guys make. That's not something that I could see coming to council and asking us. I would look to you to be the experts in this realm.
When this all came up, I know nothing about ammunition, and I said, if you want to give us more information, that was fine. I, I too agree, this is not a council decision. You're the experts. This goes into your budget, and if we have questions, you answer that. But I don't tell the ID department what ink to use. I don't, I don't see myself telling you what bullets to use. And you satisfied my questions in the report of how you, how you make your decisions. So I'm good with what we know.
If I can add one more thing. Expanding bullets are mandated in big game hunting by, by the Colorado Department of Wildlife. They're mandated hunting because they do enormously more damage to the animal in really providing a quicker kill. Expanding bullets work exactly the same on human beings, and is that the statement we want to make? You are of the citizens.
Again, from a perspective of, as you know, I've done security for a number of years, and I've also went through some multiple self-defense courses. There is no self-defense course that I've heard of that doesn't use this kind of ammunition. And the reason being is, in, just in a, as a citizen, if I were to have to pull a firearm, I'm at the place where I have to use deadly force. Deadly force is deadly force. It's an ugly thing to me. So I, I don't really agree with that, that context, because I don't see that our police officers get to that place and don't think that they're in a position where they have to use deadly force, just like as a regular citizen, if I got to the place where I wanted to defend my life or someone else's life, it's to the place of deadly force. And that is, so I'm not sure what statement that's making besides I want to get to go home.
First of all, are, okay, the police officers are more highly trained than individual citizens? That is why we spend so much time and effort doing that. We hold them to a higher standard than does an ordinary citizen. We look at steps for intermediate force use. That's why we use tasers. We use tasers as an intermediate level. We now have several decades of experience with, like, expanding ammunition. So what are the results of those? Has it made policing safer? I think it's worth a look to hear those. That's why I brought it up. If that's not the majority of this council, so be it.
I only humor the conversation because I don't want the narrative to be left out there that somehow anybody at this table or anybody who works for the city is brazen about having to use deadly force. There are, in, as pointed out by our colleagues, there are instances why those other ammunition types actually more dangerous for the community at large, because they won't stop in a target necessarily. That's, a full metal jacket is something they use in war when you're not caring about what's behind your target. And to me, that's, it's, frankly, it's, it would be reckless. I mean, the data is, shows reasons why that is a standard across the country for law enforcement. So I, I guess I just don't disagree, and it seems like the majority doesn't either. But I, I don't, I just want to make sure that it's clear that I certainly don't think that the use of deadly force is something that is not super serious, but if it gets to that point, it is just that, it's the use of deadly force. They went through their tool, tools that they have at their disposal, and those weren't appropriate for the situation. And then a court of law gets to decide, as well as our different agencies that judge an officer who has to use their firearm, whether or not they were in the right or not.
There have been two recent examples in the dead-ter metro area where the outcome is not what anyone wants. One was in a case where some Denver officers used their, really firearms, and quite a few bystanders were interested, were injured. And the second one is the Johnny Hurley case in Arvada. Had a different type of ammunition been used, Johnny Hurley might be alive today. I mean, the expanding ammunition in the Johnny Hurley case ensured his death.
I don't know the details of those, and I'm not a subject matter expert, so I, I wouldn't know, but.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Monthly workforce report, the only thing I thought is, it's taking people a heck of a long time to put that thing together. I don't know what anybody else wants, but I think it's just helpful to see the positions we have open, what we failed, but all of the other, oh, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All of the other things that are in there, I don't want to waste people's time, but I don't know what everybody else is liking about them.
Well, I thought, if I was looking over this last time, I thought it would actually be helpful to know just a couple of things, like one, how, how we're, and maybe it's not as frequent, I agree, you know, I want it to be something that's reasonable for folks, maybe it's quarterly, I don't know. But I would also like to know just how are we doing with any of our other employment goals, like, you know, diversity in leadership, or anything like that? Be able to give us some, because it's really hard to just, you know, see like who's randomly hired for one thing versus another, and I know there's a lot of internal promotions and movements happening, and so maybe just some bigger goals that we track.
Okay.
Not as often.
I, I agree. I think some of these can, I think some positions can fall off. I think it served a time and purpose, because there was a point where council, there was so much transition that council couldn't keep up with the transition in positions, and I think that some of them could, the filled positions could fall off this report. But I think it's good to just kind of know, like, you know, I didn't, I didn't recall that our interim police chief was interim since October of last year. It's just you lose track of dates as far as the interim positions, so that could, the interim positions can stay on there, but I think that we could kind of condense, or even bullet point, where we saw open positions in parks and rec. There's two, one in leadership and one in the boots-on-the-ground level kind of thing. So I think this is a little too detailed for the point that we're at as a council.
Any other comments?
I think that part of the reason that this kind of came up, and, you know, for whatever it's worth, is there were becoming departments such as the police department, where we weren't realizing as a council how far down we were. I mean, if, if at a, I think one point that Councilman makes, as far as like some of those bigger positions, how long they've been vacant, is, it's a good reminder for us to have that in there. But if, like, some of the, the more calm frontline workers drop off, maybe we could work out with you, where if it gets to a certain threshold of vacancies in a given area that we could be aware of it, just so that we're aware. So I think one of the other areas is probably parks and rec with some of the seasonal, and it was very challenging. And so those are areas where we're going to directly hear a lot of impact. You know, why isn't mowing happening? Why is it taking longer for a police officer to show up? So it's good for us to understand context around areas where you're really having trouble with the workforce, at least for me. It would be useful if we're going to make the adjustment.
Great.
And I would find it more useful if you just parroted down to where are we in each department versus what our authorized level is.
Okay. Yeah.
But I had all day to sort of think of.
Sure.
In reading that last night, I just thought, somebody's, this is just taking maybe too much time, is what I, that was just my.
And so, you know, I appreciate the feedback and ideas, and so as I come on board, you know, and kind of dive deep into, you know, how we're tracking people in the organization, certainly work with our deputy city manager and HR to streamline, if you will, and maybe make, you know, a little bit more broad, but, but impactful. Okay? And so we can work on that. All right? Fair enough? Okay.
Presentations, City Manager.
Yes, and so the next, or the first presentation is the community drop off recycling sites, large item pickup options. And so we have Assistant City Manager Chris Lindsay coming up, and Business Operations Manager Jennifer Prehn.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're excited to talk to you about community, community drop off recycling sites and large item pickup options this evening. Next to me is Jennifer Prehn. She's the Business Operations Manager and General Services. Jennifer does a little bit of everything for our department. You mentioned those, those notices that went out for the sales tax system, the print shop falls under Jennifer's group, in addition to our environmental compliance and a number of other, a number of other critical areas. So she's been involved in the community recycling sites for a bit now. Like to start this off this evening by just mentioning that we're looking at this from a lens of beautiful city. Certainly, you're going to see through the slides as we progress, a bit of what's gone on at the community recycling sites. What we have in front of us is really a difficult problem. This is one that's been difficult to address and difficult to find a solution that checks off all the boxes. We've also combined two topics tonight because we think that there are solutions for both that are mutually beneficial, that help us find some success in both these areas. We can go to the next slide, please.
Councilor Emmett.
Do you want questions during, or should we wait till after? It's your preference.
Let's hold.
Okay.
Let's hold. Thank you. So the city's current drop off recycling program is made up of four decentralized, unstaffed, unfenced, unsecured community recycling sites. The four locations include Fire Station One, the city's municipal court, municipal services center, and the Westview Recreation Center. You're going to see a number of photos throughout the slide deck. This is just a small slice of what our facilities group routinely provides, a small group of city staff, email users, as we track a bit of what has gone through those sites. Just in case it's not entirely clear, that one on the top left is a small boat on a trailer. Next slide, please. So the recycling program's annual budget is listed right here. The total is about $125,000 annually, and I think the biggest item to note here is we spend more cleaning up these sites than we do actually moving the recycling and having that taken away. That's something that we've gone to in the last couple of years, daily site cleanup by the city's janitorial contractor, to hope to provide clean sites in a beautiful city. But you can see from those pictures that they very quickly get overrun during the day, and that's what daily pickup these sites. In addition, we routinely have hard-to-recycle or hazardous waste that is dropped off at these sites. And we also receive fines for contamination that the city has to pay. Next slide, please. So the current recycling program, material routinely exceeds the bin capacity. These sites are open 24 hours a day, again, not staffed, not fenced. We routinely have contaminated recycling bins that have enough contaminants in them that they need to be taken to the dump instead of to the recycling facility. There's routinely illegal dumping. These areas are not safe. They're also not, not well lit. You see some of these with broken glass. We actually had a fire in one of these facilities last year, and we received a number of resident complaints. The one from the municipal court, you can see the neighbor's backyard from right where the, where the dumpsters are. We've worked and expanded actually our cleanup program to try and remove some of what flies from the overflowing dumpsters down to Turnpike Drive and the back of those neighbors' fences, but there's certainly a cost to do that and an impact to the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So we wanted to provide council a comparison to what our neighbors, what some folks, what some cities in the area provide. I think, you know, certainly the most telling item that's on here is we have four sites compared to one in each of these other jurisdictions. And as we move forward, we can also talk a bit about some of these other items that are accepted, that we would look to accept in something that's a centralized recycling facility. So I should also note, anyone that's in Jefferson County has access to the Rooney Road facility for hard-to-recycle materials, but that's quite a hike to the other side of, other side of Golden. Next slide, please. So a couple of these I mentioned previously, actions that staff has taken in the last couple of years to improve the recycling sites. We've initiated daily pickups with our recycling hauler. We've moved to daily site cleaning. We've added signage in English and Spanish, and we've initiated a request for information to consider alternatives to these sites. Next slide, please. So the 2022 budget proposed an alternative that was to partner with an established third-party vendor and open a centralized recycling site. And that's really the question that we have for city council tonight. Is this still a sensible alternative for our community? With a centralized recycling facility, it would be something fenced, gated, staffed, and we would look to expand the services that are provided to offer some of those hard-to-recycle opportunities. We would also look to close out those four community recycling sites. We listed 30 days here, although certainly open to movement there. And this would involve a lot of community outreach and communication to inform resident, residents of the city of any changes to those sites, because certainly we understand the importance, as they're very busy. I would also just note that the services that a centralized site would provide will depend upon the site that we identify. Certainly, location, facilities, and the size of the site will dictate some of these services, as they require larger, larger pieces of equipment, more folks, more area, things like that. Next slide, please. So here's an example of just one of those comparison facilities, and we'll see another one further towards the back of what a staffed, gated, fenced facility can look like. Certainly, we would look to partner with an organization that specializes in recycling and those hard-to, hard-to-recycle items and expand currently what we're providing. We would look to minimize illegal dumping, expand our current services. By having someone on site, you also have an opportunity to educate folks on the things that can be recycled. There's a number of grant opportunities, especially through the state, to help offset, especially some of the startup costs with having a hard facility. And lastly, I, we understand especially the need for those that are elderly, physical challenge, physically challenged, to get the material from their vehicle out, again, potentially properly sorted to the correct area. So having someone that's there would be able to provide, provide that assistance. So now I'm going to switch and talk about large item pickup. We can go to the next slide, please. So large item pickup is a positive program to help residents clean their properties. It dates back to the 1970s in some, in some form or fashion within the city, and the program was suspended during COVID. So looking back to the last year in which we had data on costs and participants, this is what we've pulled. Again, that was in 2020. The registration fees at that time were $30 per household. And the administrative cost includes staff time, preparing registration process, our purchasing procedures, quality control on addresses, reaching out to registrants and issuing refunds, overseeing and inspection of three Saturday pickups, and following up with complaints, missed pickups, and post-cleanup items. And in 2020, we had about 1,500 participants. And I would also note that last, that last star at the bottom, our staff and environmental compliance did a ride along in 2018, and they identified that approximately 40% of what was taken to the dump during the large item pickup were items that could have been recycled. Next slide, please. So as we look to move forward with our large item pickup program, certainly we saw several, we saw several requests. I think we had two community budget requests through the budget process this year, and we talked with council about the large item pickup. So we've looked at a number of alternative, alternatives here. So first and foremost, there are a number of private sector, private market options for a large item cleanup. We're aware that most of the trash haulers offer some form of this, some using the bags, some using the larger, larger roll-offs, those sorts of items. So certainly, there are a number of those private market options that are available. To look at city-sponsored options behind that, certainly, we've heard a lot about needs-based assistance with the large item pickup program. We've talked about drop-off events, say, a roll-off for a neighborhood, something like that. We've discussed a stipend for curbside pickup, so something that might be managed by a private provider. We've looked at reinstating the program as is. I would note that's one that staff does not recommend. So the program as it existed previously was incredibly staff-intensive, and we would need to reduce service levels in some critical areas in order to provide that program. It's extremely staff-intensive, and a lot of those staff were from our streets division, and we're hoping to get a lot of repaving done next summer, so we'd like them dedicated to that. And last but not least, something the staff has certainly looked at is if we continue to offer this program or offer in some form or fashion, increasing the fee to cover the cost, that goes a little bit against potentially talking about needs-based assistance, but it's one of the options, one of the items we're looking at as we consider a large item pickup. So I think that the question here, certainly in large item pickup, is what do you believe makes the most sense for the city of Westminster, and what's most needed out there in the community? I could go to the next slide, please, and I'll wrap up. So here's another centralized staff and fence facility that you see in the photo right there. So some next steps here, certainly if we want to pursue a centralized site, we would look to establish an agreement with a third-party vendor. We would identify a location and potentially bring back a lease for city council action. We'd undertake some intensive community engagement, and we'd look to transition the closure of our four current sites. Through that process, that intensive community engagement, sorry, we want to talk to the community about levels of service that we would provide, and certainly any feedback on a location for the centralized site. In addition to that, this facility would be one where we could locate a roll-off to have a large item pickup program, where folks bring their item to a recycling facility. Certainly, all of that that might be recyclable could be recycled, and the rest put in a roll-off, that's something we could do a couple of times a year. We think that's, that's an alternative if we continue to go down the role of the centralized site and potential, potentially a next step for a large item pickup program. And with that, I would look for any feedback from city council on potential next steps.
Councilor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a little bit of history. I believe it was two, three years ago, council had this discussion about closing the community drop off, and our concern at that time was access to different parts of the city. But since then, and I, I don't know if the. But since then, and I, I don't know if the pandemic has made it worse or not, these drop-off sites have gotten, I believe, worse, just observationally, the ones that I go by. And it, it's just a breeding ground for dumping. And so I, I, my opinion right now is, is the only way that we can control that and work towards our, you know, beautiful city is, is to go to a controlled site.
So I agree. I would like to see it more controlled and managed. Question I would have is just what is the cost comparison between the four sites and just the one managed site? And location-wise, yes, it would be great for it to be truly central for the community. While I don't pick up, or I don't, you know, I have curbside recycling, I didn't see a lot in the northern part of the city. There's a lot kind of, sort of southern and western portion of the city. So if you can find a good location, great. I think for our large item pickup, to have some option for at your house, because there are, there are people who just can't, you know, they don't have a truck, or they don't have, you know, a good back, or, or, you know, whatever they're, or they're older, or whatever the case may be. They can't get it to our site. It's great if we have that roll-off thing at the central location, but there's just people who can't get it. And I know other cities have some type of curbside pickup, so I still would like to pursue some option there. And I, you know, maybe it's more overall, but we do provide some need-based assistance.
Mayor Proton?
Quick question. So on the centralized, once upon a time, this was the plan, right? Say maybe the mayor was here before. Why did that go away? What was the shift from doing a centralized site? Since we're coming full circle, I'd like to understand that portion of it.
The city started a conversation about providing curbside trash and recycling services.
That, that was the switch.
I don't know that that, I don't know that that was the switch, but certainly that delayed the conversation.
Okay. And I remember this coming when you were talking about, because I've been back and forth personally, because I, I do curbside recycling, but it also, and I think most people is, the service is the same. It's every other week. So you have a bigger family, you like to actually do that. I still end up, especially around like holidays, Amazon and stuff. Working at home for the last two years, I certainly still utilize the Westview one, but I will say it's gotten pretty out of control. I think that I've mentioned to council, two different occasions, one, I'm pretty sure it was a whole tree in one of them. And the other time, there was a couch spread between probably three of them. So people certainly are abusing it. And I don't think that that's going to change unless you were be able to manage those actual individual sites, which probably isn't feasible. I do have concern about people being able to get to it, because I think part of the whole ideas has always been to get people to, to utilize recycling. And so are we gonna kind of go the other way, because people aren't going to want to have to go there? Or maybe it'll encourage more people to do curbside? I don't know. So I, even though I have some, some hesitancy because of access to it, I do think that we're just at a place where it doesn't make sense. It's just too abused in, certainly, some of the things you're showing. I think it's starting to become a safety concern. I think last Christmas, the one at Westview, there was like a lot of construction stuff that got left there. I think people were just like leaving their garages out and leaving it, not even in the dumpsters, just on the side like you're seeing in there. So on the, I have a similar question, though, on the large item, same, same kind of thing that went away for a while because of budget, I believe. About right, maybe the year before pandemic, it came back, or?
2000 was the last year we offered that.
2000 was, and did we not?
2020. Sorry.
So we did, did do that then, and we're not, we're just not seeing, like, it's just too expensive and we don't have enough staff. I mean, since it did go away and come back, right?
Staff-intensive and contractors, actually, to be, to be honest. So previously, when we bid that out, we opened that for a lot longer than the bid than we expected to initially and ultimately had one, one response. So I think our concern now is a lot of those, a lot of those trash haulers likely have fewer staff now than they did previously.
So what I would like to see, if there's support for it in both of these areas, because I, again, I'll put support behind the centralized for all the reasons I mentioned. On the large item, I think it makes sense. And I think there's been some ideas that you mentioned as far as partnering with the haulers. And I think that one of the, the misses in, in, so even go back to the, the curbside recycling. I think there was a miss in that, that the community got so tied up in, should it be government mandated versus, you know, what was your real intent? Real intent was to get more people to recycle, in my mind. And the conversation went in such a different direction that that intent got lost. And I've always personally been frustrated, even though I was very loud against that being mandated, that there wasn't a better conversation around what do you actually want to accomplish? And what was wanting to be accomplished on one hand was more people diverting recyclable materials to a, a source that would recycle it. So if we could do an education component, I think that there's a lot of room where this is more of a standard thing that most haulers, or haulers provide, so that we're educating, like, here's the things that the, you know, the haulers will provide, even if it's partnering with the haulers. There's a similar opportunity in the large item pickup. I did not realize, to be frank, up until six months ago, that my hauler, if I call him up at least 24 hours before and say, here's what I've got, they'll say, they'll ask what items I have, they'll charge me that day, and then they'll pick those items up with my normal trash pickup. I don't think most people realize that that's an option, and it's actually pretty affordable. I think, what were we charging last time with the large item, like 30?
$30.
It's, it was similar. I had them pick up a couple of bookcases and it was something like 30 or 40 dollars. So I think there's opportunity to, you know, go the direction of the centralized and then tackle some of these other things just by simply talking to the businesses who already do these services in our city, doing some education and outreach with our community. And then you kind of hit, hit a couple of these things at a couple of different angles, if that makes sense.
Oh, sorry, Emmons is.
Where, if you're looking at a proposed centralized site, where would you be looking at within our city?
We don't have a site picked out right now. Certainly, we've looked with our real estate folks and stuff where we could find industrial-type area to offer this, but we have not, we have not, I've not really gone down that path too far, because we wanted to check in with council on where we are right here. Additionally, we need to bring in that third-party vendor to find out what they're going to need on the site.
Because I, we're running out of space. So that would be a concern of mine. You had mentioned that you would look to maybe leasing if that was a centralized site, okay? Which then wouldn't be our property, which then would be an added cost. So I would agree with you, what's the benefit of four sites versus one? But along with that cost is, and part of my concern is what's the downflow look like? Is, this is all well and good, recycling, but we're not the end product of it to be able to recycle it. And so is it actually getting separated appropriately in order to be recycled? Because I know that I as well do the curbside recycling and I then, it goes out of my hands, and then I trust that there is a recycling process that moves forward. So much to like your data that you found in 2018 is only 40% of the items that were put in these bins could be recycled. And so at what cost? So if we're doing this for 51,000, 100,000, 200,000, is that an appropriate amount to ensure that we are doing what is right per recycling and what needs to be recycled?
Can I clarify that, that number, just so we're crystal clear? So the 40% number was from the large item pickup program. 40% of what was picked up in the large item pickup program in 2018 could have been recyclable. I don't know that I can quantify what had, that has been picked up from the community recycling sites.
Okay. I think there's still some good education that could be done around that. I know even my family, you know, pizza boxes are very hard to recycle, because with grease and things. But people don't realize that that is a challenge to be recycled. And so I think some kind of education I'd be definitely supportive of as far as here's what can, here's what can't, and then also the, the private sector and joining on the partnership of that makes complete sense. So as far as what you're looking for for council, I mean, a centralized site seems appropriate. I just don't have the information to then say, is it appropriate at what cost? When, you know, if it's going to be five times more than what we've, I, which I don't presume that it would be, five times more than what the actual cost is right now with four sites, it doesn't make sense to move that way. Makes sense to make sure that we're keeping what we have in place working. Amplify it, make it better. So that's my, my take.
Yeah, on the, I'll start with the large item. I was looking for a different view of the whole thing. I would like to see it portrayed as a marketing opportunity for the nine or 10 different trash haulers we have in our city. I've always viewed the large item pickup as a service to our residents. Help them get rid of awkward stuff. So it's got to be picked up at their houses, else otherwise they need a strong back and a pickup truck? Okay, so what I was thinking of is we approach the nine or 10 different trash haulers in their city. Find out who offers the large item pickup. I know my trash hauler does, BCD, and several of the other ones do. And what I was thinking of for that $50,000 the program costs us and only served about 4% of the city, 1,200 people, that we could send a $15 coupon to anyone who wants to be in the city. They could turn that into their trash hauler. And they might have to add $25 of their own. But even if we add 10% participation, two and a half times increase, we'd still spend $50,000. We'd get out of the accounting business. We wouldn't have to do it. We could take requests for these coupons, and the trash haulers might see this as a great marketing opportunity. And if some other trash hauler didn't want to do it, they'd say, we'll do it. They might even do it just for the coupon that we give them. So it's a service to our, okay, community. And if we take a different approach, now we don't know. Maybe none of the trash haulers would want to do this. Maybe they've all got enough business and they don't want more business. They don't want new business. But I would like to see that at least asked about. Okay, because I really don't want to be in the trash hauling business. So that gets back to the recycle centers. I view the recycle centers as a trash hauling business. It's taken advantage of all the time. That's not right. Secondly, single-stream recycle doesn't work. Valuable stuff needs to be on its own stream, whether that be cardboard or glass or metal. It needs to be on its own stream. Isn't that why you get contaminated things there?
The contamination we have is typically trash that's.
Yeah.
That's put in.
Okay, but there's other kind of contamination. Like, like if you have a bunch of broken glass mixed in with recycle, is that recyclable anymore? It's my understanding it's not. That when you have a bunch of broken glass and otherwise what is perfectly recyclable stuff can't be used because the broken glass is too hard to remove. And, and I see our sites being taken advantage of. There is recycling opportunities for individuals with their home trash pickup. I would also like to explore, our VADA had manned sites. Is there some arrangement we can make with our VADA to allow our people who want to recycle to go to our V? And we could pay our VADA for that. Because I think any kind of unattended site we run, whether it's one or four, is going to be abused. And that defeats the whole purpose of everything. Okay, and I would be open just ending, ending our recycle, ending our recycle, okay, support program completely. I'd be open to that, too. Thanks.
Councilor Zadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions. So would the centralized site be manned? Did you mention that? That would be, okay. And do you have the capacity numbers? Saw that chart with the neighbors. Do you have the capacity of what each of their single sites actually take? No. I assume the capacity of the centralized site that we want to move to would be fairly large. Right? If you have four sites today that are overflowing. So that's why I don't agree, Council Baker, that we can just stop the service. I think the demand is there. And just because we have a few bad apples taking advantage, doesn't mean that you stop, that you ignore the demand. But from a demand standpoint, I'm curious. It would need to be some level. So I know you're not going to be able to match the capacity of four sites into one. But I'm assuming you're going to keep up some, it can't be a tiny centralized site, right? That wouldn't make sense. So that would be something that I would be curious on, on size, sizes and sizing. And that chart you had of the centralized site benefits, that bullet list, do you know how many of those would be shared with? Shared meaning just our communities, the, the surrounding communities would also have those benefits. Do, do they do those things? So do the, would the benefits that we would get be shared with those communities?
Would we open the site to residents of other communities?
No, with the site that we open, the centralized site, those benefits that we gain, are our surrounding communities also gaining those benefits? With their own sites? Because those are very specific, unique benefits I saw on the bullets. I'm curious if they actually are gaining that on their own right, right now.
I don't know about all of those, but I think most of them, I would have to, I would have to check with each of them, though.
Okay, and have you looked into the producer responsibility program? What benefits would that have for this from the granting opportunity?
There are state programs that we could apply for with grants. Most are shovel-ready recycling site programs. We've got a few opportunities there.
Specifically, that producer responsibility bill that passed this, this past session? What's the impact of that with this, if any? I don't know.
We'd have to look into that a little further.
Because that, so that provided statewide recycling, particularly for municipalities like us. So I'm curious what that, if we can take advantage of a lot of that funding. And then cost, yeah, I'd be curious what the costs are. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with moving to the centralized site, but we don't have any cost comparisons to really do that on, but I, a yes anyway.
And before I get to you, because protocols say everybody should speak once, so I'm going to jump in. We have the shred-a-thon. Why haven't we ever had an electronic thon? Why haven't we ever had an electronic thon? Every other city around does, but they take, you have to be a resident a lot of times and call in your address and everything to be able to get in line to do that. So sometimes I get my son to do it in Brumfield and take our stuff. But I know Thornton has them all the time, just, I don't, we don't need an answer tonight, but we need to shred. I, I know, because we've, many of us have worked the shred-a-thon, we know what a success that is, getting identity theft papers out of households to help that curb that, but I, I don't know the time we've had the electronic one. Curbside, my trash hauler has that. I don't think we do advertise, they don't advertise it well. We need to let people know to check with their trash hauler. Oh, and like if we can't do the large item pickup, but we have a centralized place that they can get rid of mattresses and things like that, just like the snowbusters, we need a junk hauler buster. I mean, people that have pickups and people that can team up, that have backs, that can pick up stuff from people. Because the thing I saw about having the large item pickup was we had less trash in neighborhoods, we didn't have the junk in backyards, and I think our hazardous waste piece is so underly, not used and known of. Just that program alone, I know you can only do it once a year, but tell the neighbor a block, get together. Somebody picks the first quarter, somebody picks the second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter, and whoever has it says, okay, I'm calling, getting this and all of the oil, the paint, the whatever goes into that and is picked up, but just that person doesn't have to put into it, fill up the bag and get the neighbors to get rid of it. We need this junk and hazardous material out of individual homes. And that was the beauty of the, the large pickup piece. Especially if this centralized is going to take things like the mattresses and things that are hard to get rid of, that's a positive, but we just then need to think creatively. People will help people, but we need another volunteer program. We need education, we need to set this up, even in what's recyclable. We need it in chunks, because when my trash hauler sends me this thing for even our recycling and you sort of mind-numbingly look at it, and then all of a sudden you can't do glass because there's no call for it, it's just little bits and pieces so people can just start getting used to things and figuring out how we do make it all work. So I'm okay with centralized, but all the questions that have been asked and costs, I want to know, I want to know where that centralized is. Brumfield used to have theirs manned and with gates, so we could only go at certain times. So again, we just called Jason and say, we're coming to pick you up, so you have a driver's license so we can get in to do it. Because it was very simple, it was very easy to use, and it's very, very local and accessible. So they, it always looked pristine, anytime we went there, pristine. They have their, their tree limbs and that at a different place, but you can go any day of the week for that. And we, again, just call Jason and say, you're going with us on a quick trip. So we've used other people's stuff because of where our kids live, but, and it works. We just need the education piece, people how to use it. We have the hazardous program already in the books, we just need people to understand how to use that and use it smartly with neighbors. And we need to figure out, team up with, I don't know how Best Buy gets rid of their stuff, but you can take one thing in a day, even advertising for them that you can do that. I mean, it's no cost, it's no cost to us, it's just saying, here's where people will take things. We need to do more of that. I loved your slide presentation tonight because you're telling people, here's what's coming. Well, we use that sort of thing for how they can do this because it's very little effort if they just know how to do it.
Thank you. Just a couple of other thoughts. It would be helpful to know, as we're talking about whether, yeah, some of us know whether or not our haulers do take large items. Like my only experience with, with it is for ours, which is for our HOA, is that it's like $250 to like get one of those big bags or whatever. So, so would love to just know, yeah, what is the range and is it really available to all of us or not? If we, if we're just going to go the route of large haul, you know, the haulers doing it themselves and not offering something. And then the, just adding on to the questions about just how does the managed site work? It would be helpful to know, is it, from what I know of some of those managed sites, A, they're clean, B, there's, I believe, a separation of materials, you know, you can only do
Cardboard, yeah.
Yeah, so it might just be helpful for us to know kind of how that works. And the, to Pastor Rizotti's question, you know, is it working for other places? Are they getting a better, you know, recyclability out of the trash that's brought there?
Yes.
And the person comes out and helps you. They don't know if it's your first time or hundredth time, they're just there to help and they do it very nicely.
Yeah.
That's a good question. I'm curious, because you said yes on the diversion rate. So like, do we know kind of what we're gaining in diversion rate with the sites that we have now? Like do, or do we not have any way to gauge that?
No.
I'll just say waste management, I see, I asked my husband because he knows these things. He said, as of August, waste management won't even pick up the occasional extra trash bag curbside, everything has to be in trash can. So some of us are limited.
You're in a HOA, we aren't, and we can't put out our extra trash.
Yeah.
And I have waste management, so, but they will pick up just a couch or whatever, and it's like $35.
That's not for us.
Okay, do you have enough information?
Yes.
Thank you. Too much information?
Thank you for your feedback, we appreciate it.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, ask them what, what we have directed them to do.
What did you hear? I heard centralization.
Centralization, but also there's a lot of interest in the location and the cost of that. So I think if we were to come back with a lease, I would include that information, certainly with any decision points. I think generally I heard working more with the private trash haulers to advertise the services that they provide. I do want to put in a plug for Jen's team, certainly the community assistance and our environmental compliance team, they do a lot of advertising of the Hard to Recycle Guide and the services that are already out there. So I think this can, this can expand what they do as well.
And we have the hazardous materials guide. Again, make it accessible, do it in chunk pieces at a time, not the whole thing that you have to swallow. Just a constant feeding of bits and pieces, I just think goes a long ways.
Ange, what's your turnaround time if folks call with Hard to Recycle?
We, we need to respond that. So my team is pretty much
So 48 hours if you call the city looking for how to get rid of, how to get rid of something hard to recycle or household hazards waste.
Anything else you want to hear from them? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen.
Next up.
Water tanks.
So if we could have Sarah Borgers, Andrea Long, is it Long, Song, Song, and Andy Walsh going to talk to us about the Northridge Tank Project outstanding.
Yes, thank you so much. Good to talk with you again while getting set up here and we're switching around. I do want to introduce Andrea, she is our utilities operations manager. As her day job, right now she is also our acting utilities engineering manager. So she's doing double duty for us, she's also taken on our engineering team, so she's here with us tonight and played a role in the presentation. Andy's going to get into the details of it and I'll try not to steal too much of his thunder, but I think one of the key takeaways here is that we're seeing a lot of cost escalation. I think that's probably not particularly new, we'll focus on this particular project in this, in this presentation. But I do just want to get ahead of it a little bit and say that we have been seeing this. And so when we brought the rate models to you earlier this year, those rate models did include much of this cost escalation that we're going to be talking about. So while we may be talking about asking for more budget, just know that it has been included in that 4% water rate discussion that we have with you here just a couple months ago. So with that, I'll introduce Andy Walsh, he's one of our senior engineers. He's been with the city for
Over 15 years.
Over 15 years, so we've got, he's got a lot of experience with these sorts of projects.
He goes first slide.
We need the water presentation slide.
Can I go get a water?
She bring me popcorn? Anyone?
We don't have
That make for some interesting study sessions.
We have to take it
Everyone good?
Run out the back door.
Let's evacuate.
Should do more pranks.
Well, and with that, thank you for your presentation and
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Councilors for joining us this evening on our presentation for Factors Influencing the Costs of the Northridge Tanks Project. So the Northridge Tanks Project, as you're aware, is located south of City Hall. It plays a critical role in the hydraulics of our distribution system because it serves the largest pressure zone in the city, and other subzones are served from this pressure zone. Total storage volume at the Northridge site is nine and a half million gallons, that's 30% of the overall city's water, total water storage at the city, making it our largest tank site. Next slide, please. So the Northridge Water Tanks Replacement Project replaces two of the three existing tanks, shown here in this slide, the middle and the right tank. These tanks are steel, 54 years old, at the end of their useful life, and are structurally unsound. The replacement tanks will be constructed of concrete, which is shown in this same slide, the tank on the left, that was completed in 2016. We've determined that concrete tanks have a longer life, useful life, and less long-term costs through the duration of their, their life. The steel tanks were taken out of service a year ago, and the new tanks will take a full year to construct. The distribution is currently operating well, however, we recommend that the new tanks be replaced as early as possible to reduce the risks of potentially running out of water due to a major water main break or a major fire. Next slide, please. The demolition contract amendment for the removal of the steel tanks was awarded in August of this year. We began work mid-October and it's nearly complete. At the time the demolition contract was presented to council for approval, we noted the cost escalation for the construction phase of the project was a concern and that there may be insufficient funds to complete construction. We are presenting a first reading for a budget appropriation and for construction contract amendments to City Council on the 14th, and a second reading will be presented on November 28th. City will not, like Sarah mentioned, increase rates as a result of appropriating these funds since the adopted rate model took this project into consideration. If City Council approves the budget appropriation and contract amendments, we will remain on track to complete construction of the replacement tanks by the end of 2023. However, if a decision is made to pause approval of these tanks and tank contracts, it could delay completion another full year to the end of 2024. And the reason for this is that the construction season for tanks is during those warm months from May to October.
And what would cause us to pause?
If a decision is made not to approve these contracts. Next slide, please. So this figure may look familiar to many of you as it was presented to council in August and is a trend of the producer price index for non-residential construction developed by the Colorado Lead School of Business. As you can see from the steep portion on the right side of the curve, the PPI, or the cost of producing goods, increased significantly starting in November of 2020. I apologize if you can't read that well, but that's at the trough, just to the left of that high increase is November. The design phase of the Northridge Water Tanks Replacement Project highlighted in red similarly occurred during this period of significant cost escalation. The bids recently received for a construction reflect this cost escalation and are $5.5 million higher than the $16 million originally budgeted in 2019 for this project. This is a 34% increase resulting in a new total project cost of $21.5 million. Increases in material costs are a major contributor to the escalation in project costs. Structural concrete, primary material used in the tanks, saw a 36% increase over the past three years, as seen during construction of Denver Water's North Water Treatment Plant in 2019 and the City of Boulder's wastewater treatment plant in 2022. Next slide, please. The Associated General Contractors of America tracks the health of the construction industry and their findings from a construction alert published in July of this year, highlighting the unprecedented cost increases that occurred over the past two years. Inflation is at a 40-year high and the threat of a recession exacerbates the issue. The AGC states that demand for new infrastructure is high and out of sync with available resources. Curbages in labor, increases in material costs, and disruptions in supply chains are three major contributors to the escalated costs of these large construction projects. Next slide, please. The Bureau of Labor Statistics tracks producer price indices for various commodities and costs of many materials continue to climb. As shown in this figure, during a 26-month period between April of 2020 and June of this year, steel increased 124%, copper 68%, lumber 61%, and plastics 55%. The AGC documented that 70% contractors pass these rising costs on their customers, and the city is seeing this on our capital projects. Next slide, please. Ways we are mitigating costs on the Northridge Water Tanks Replacement Project include an alternative delivery method called Construction Manager at Risk, or CMAR. CMAR delivery helps us to efficiently accelerate schedules that often take longer on projects these days, and we are seeing that on our, on our projects on a regular basis. CMAR is a collective collaborative approach where we onboard contractor early during the design phase to help us value engineer each step of the process and identify ways to more efficiently construct the project. This collaborative approach also allows us to pre-procure materials ahead of construction that are in short supply, and we've done this on the Northridge project with water pipe and valves. These sometimes take months, in this case, they were a 16-week lead item. Another way we are mitigating costs is by finding savings from other capital projects. We were able to utilize $2.2 million from our Sheridin Water We were able to utilize $2.2 million from our Sheridan Waterline project savings, and we would like to reallocate these to the Northridge Tanks Project. So we will be requesting this reallocation by council on November 14th and 28th. Next slide. Cost escalation is a citywide issue that all departments are experiencing. In presenting this presentation or in preparing this presentation, city staff realized the global nature of this challenge, and we would like to come back to council again to strategize and help mitigate costs throughout the city and get council's feedback. Next slide, please. So in recap, we will be presenting the first reading of the budget amendment and construction contracts for the Northridge Water Tanks Replacement Project at the November 14th council meeting next Monday. Pending approval of the first reading, we will be presenting a second reading of the budget amendment for council approval on the 28th. We appreciate you listening to this presentation and would like to open it up. Any questions?
Officer C M A R?
Thank you. Primary pressure zone, is this pressure zone one? Okay, and does this serve especially the businesses south or north of 92nd and Sheridan? Is that part pressure zone one?
So pressure zone one extends all the way up to 128th Avenue at the north end. On the west side up to Wadsworth Boulevard. I believe even further west than that, there's a pocket around 92nd and Sheridan, which is zone three up to about 104th Avenue, south to Turnpike. And really, pressure zone one extends all the way into the south area of the city to the very southern extent. Okay, thank you.
Officer Bacon?
Oh, yeah, I had sent in some questions. Could you tell me how much, you said the concrete increased 36% over three years?
That's correct. That's based on a few recent projects that our contractor completed.
Okay, so how much a yard was that in concrete? Or do you know that?
So it was about $130 a yard. I took those details out of the presentation from the 2019 project and about $170 on the 2020 project.
And is that going to change if we get a recession?
So I'm not sure. But what I'm hearing from a couple of sources in the construction industry is that these costs are not likely to decrease. We've seen this, I've seen it on one of my projects recently, the Northridge Interceptor School project. We bid that during the pandemic. I was concerned whether or not that was the right time to construct that project. And I'm glad we did. Prices continued to escalate on that project. We had some requests to talk to contractor for diesel fuel, increased 23%. Other materials, PVC pipe, for example, due to the freeze in Texas, shutdown of those plants and the hurricanes. Those, those products were difficult to obtain and skyrocketed. So those, those were some examples recently. I think with the demand of these large projects, we're not expecting to see a decrease in capital project in the near future. It's remained strong.
Okay, so, so basically, we have, okay, do we have a signed contract for $16 million to build these two tanks?
Contract is not signed. It will be presented on the 14th and the 28th.
Okay, so then the change from $16 million to $21 million is just the way we re-priced it?
That's based on bids that the contractor received from tank manufacturers. And so it is, it is the typical cost right now for these types of tanks.
So how did we buy the advanced pipe under C M A R? What money did we use?
Yes, so there was a contract approved by council on August 8th, which was for the demolition contract and to pre-procure these materials. And we took a separate contract with our engineer to engineer the final design. So kind of multi-phases, those demolition, pre-procurement with this contractor.
So if we tried to take a pause on this, you don't, you do not foresee any savings?
I do not.
Okay, and trying to learn from this, would we have been better off to let a design and build contract back in March instead of a C M A R?
So that would have taken a longer timeframe. By using C M A R, we onboarded the contractor, the C M A R contractor early, and they helped us design through the design phase. We saw efficiencies in schedule. We were able to identify some ways to improve design. There's always this imbalance between what engineers feel it can be built and the contractor, and we basically merged that. So it was the best of both worlds. We were also able to pre-procure materials. So in a traditional design bid build, once we bid it, we would have ordered that material, and it would have taken longer. Then that project schedule would have increased, and we would be subject to those costs later, those, those higher costs, I believe, later.
Okay, it's my understanding in a design and build contract, well, the contractor assumes the risk of price es- of price escalation.
A design build is similar. It is, well, so a C M A R is kind of a hybrid between a design build and design bid build. I think the, the main advantage in a C M A R is that the engineer and the contractor work both for the city. And in the design builds, the engineer is working for the design build contractor. So I feel that our best interests are served by them contracting directly with us and overseeing the work versus them being contracted under the contractor.
Wouldn't we have had a guaranteed price though in a design bill?
That typically is how a design bill works. I think there's ways you can cut corners though for them to meet that. Other ways, other times, you can have an incentive that you share those cost savings if they're realized at the end of the project. But I think that C M A R allows us to really get us our best product for the best price.
Thank you.
Counselor Azai?
Thank you, Mayor. What factors are driving the timeline? So one year to build?
So a couple of things. These tank manufacturers are getting very busy. And so a commitment was needed by the tank manufacturer, by the C M A R contractor, early. I'd say there was a contract between them or an agreement in October, maybe even September. And so if we did not get on their schedule, it wouldn't have been built in 2023. And so that piece and that if we don't move forward with approval of contract at this stage, so I think we're set up to complete by the end of 23. If we don't move forward, the, the weather is, it's impacting build in 2023. And so they would need to start pretty quickly on foundation work over the winter time so that the above groundwork and the concrete could occur in the warm months between May and October.
Okay. And do we have a map of the pressure zones? Is that a map you can send up?
We have to be a little bit cautious. There's some security-related issues. So we'd probably ask that if we share that, then it stays with City Council.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say to the questioning around, oh my God, the contract, the type of, sorry, the design bid build, sorry. Put my time down. Um, that, what I've been hearing in the construction industry is that these design bid builds, they're not, it's, it's so volatile with the pricing that the risk is not being taken on by the general contractors. And so we, we have, we are having to find different ways to, you know, find more creative ways to reduce our costs. And it's, it isn't the silver bullet anymore right now.
Unable to lock in these costs. There used to be some tanks, 30, 60 days, or maybe longer. During the pandemic, there was a period where they wouldn't honor these costs for beyond a week.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So if the two tanks were down all summer long, because you said they've been out of, out of really commission a year, right?
Correct.
So that means our existing capacity with that 6 million gallon hole in the storage was really sufficient to meet the needs of the city, and it, and will be down all next summer too, and summer's irrigation season.
Yeah, that's a great question. And so the question is, how long can we go without that additional 6 million gallons? And so it's a function of risk. And so in meeting with our staff, we were comfortable with the risk of that two-year period. But as it extends beyond that, the risk increases. And so a lot of things can happen. We've had contractors directional drilling, fiber optic where they hit a main. If that happens and if it's a major main and we can't shut it down quickly, you lose water in your tanks pretty quickly.
Good, you mentioned fire, and I think that that is a real risk that most of the state of Colorado probably is attuned to. So I mean, if you had some sort of major situation, what does that look like in terms of what it would do to supply? I mean, having a pretty recent example.
Yeah, I don't know if that's tested by fire.
Yeah.
I saw you back there. I wanted to give you a
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, Director of Fire Chief. So when we look at fire flow, you know, we look at the, through I S O Insurance Service Office and what the requirements are. And so when they, they take a look at it, they look at water capacity or water usage. So you look at a three-year average. And then you look at the highest day and you look at that. So then our city, you know, I'm gonna turn this around for that. And then on top of that, you add for fire flow, it is the insurance, I S O, they rate all of our buildings in the city, and they take the fifth from the top. So if we're at 7,500, 6,500, 6,000, 5,500, 5,500 gallons per minute, we have to have the fire flow for four hours. And so that's what we look at when we evaluate that. So it's water consumption plus what the fire demand is for a four-hour period of time. So when we take these tanks out, yeah, that we're definitely, that is a concern because we do lose that capacity for the citizens. But we are comfortable with that for this time period because we're improving our water system. We're improving our, our storage capacity. So, thank you.
Am I hearing the majority say to go forward?
Yes.
Great. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And So we'll bring in Chief Halbert, interim chief, police chief, and Jenna Roth, police legal advisor to talk qualified immunity for law enforcement officers.
We can take five minutes.
Sure. Sorry.
We ready?
All right.
Okay, we're back and we have.
Back again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, Mayor Halbert, interim chief of police. For this presentation, we talked about qualified immunity. Qualified immunity was kind of the standard up until 2020. And then in 2020, with the passage of the law enforcement integrity act. And then in 2021, with the twenty-one to fifty measures to enhance law enforcement accountability, qualified immunity changed as we know it. So here to make the presentation tonight, fortunately, you don't have to listen to me all night. Our good friend, our police legal advisor, Jenna Roth. So it's going to go with each other.
Thank you. Good evening, all. Thanks for having me here. The first slide I have is a disclaimer because I think all attorneys need to put disclaimers in any presentation. So this, basically what I want to convey with this slide is that we are only talking about a small portion of two seventeen tonight. And that is the civil liability piece. There are a lot of other areas of two seventeen. It was a twenty-four-page bill that do affect law or does affect law enforcement. But tonight's presentation is just about the civil liability piece. Next slide. So a little bit of history of qualified immunity. The concept is that it protects state and local officials from individual liability unless the official violates a clearly established constitutional right. And there's a two-part analysis that's considered by the courts. And the first is, was there even a constitutional right that was violated? And if the answer to that is yes, then they look at, was this constitutional right clearly established? Basically, did the official know that this was a constitutional right that they violated or allegedly violated? Next slide. The. Two seventeen, I want to get back up a little bit and do a little history of two seventeen. It was a piece of legislation that was introduced after the George Floyd incident in 2020. And I've been around this profession for a long time and a part of the CACP's legislative committee. And one thing that surprised all of us with this particular legislation was how quickly it was pushed through the Colorado Legislature. So the George Floyd incident happened on May twenty-fifth of 2020. The protests in Denver occurred on May twenty to thirtieth of 2020. On June third of 2020, this legislation was introduced. And it was signed into law on June nineteenth. So very quickly was it introduced and passed and signed into law. And at that time, you know, a twenty-four-page bill, we quickly had to read through it and interpret it for our law enforcement agencies. So there was a lot of parts to it that were concerning. And there were, quite frankly, good parts to two seventeen, too. It's not all bad. But this just illustrates, it was a trying time because of how quickly it was passed. And there wasn't a lot of input from the law enforcement agencies as to when the bill was drafted. There just wasn't time. So a couple of things that two seventeen did was it created a new state claim. So prior to two seventeen, if you were going to sue a law enforcement officer or a law enforcement agency for a constitutional right violation, it's a section nineteen eighty-three is what it was called, claim. And that was done in federal court. And the officer had the ability to, if they qualified under that analysis, use the defense of qualified immunity. And if they succeeded on that claim of qualified immunity, then the case did not move forward. And if they didn't, if they didn't meet the analysis, then the case could move forward and they had no qualified immunity protecting them. This two seventeen now creates a new state claim for a violation of the Colorado Constitution. And this claim, the cause of action is against the individual officers as opposed to a municipality, at this time, how it's written. A concerning piece of two seventeen, I think, for municipalities is that eliminates all of the caps on damages. So if you, as a city, are sued in state court, somebody slips and falls and sues the city for not maintaining sidewalks, let's say, then we would have coverage, well, we would have caps on the damages under the CGIA. So the current cap is three hundred and fifty thousand. But under two seventeen, with this new claim of state claim of action, there's no caps on the limitation, there's no limits on the damages. So there's no caps, the CGIA doesn't, CGIA does not apply. And that's something that we've had to get used to because we're used to that coverage. Next slide. So what is the indemnification piece of two seventeen is basically to boil it down is that if this claim comes in, it's against again the individual officer. So what we have to determine as a municipality is, did the officer act in good faith or in bad faith? And if the officer acted in good faith, then we as a municipality shall indemnify the officer for any monetary judgment. And if they acted in bad faith, the officer is responsible for up to twenty-five thousand. It's actually written, it's five percent of the judgment or twenty-five thousand, whichever is the lesser number. But up to twenty-five thousand dollars in the judgment. And then the municipality is responsible for the remainder of the judgment. Now, in prior, before two seventeen, if an officer, we determine an officer acted in bad faith, then we as a municipality would not cover the actions of the officer. Bad faith would be an extreme incident that basically the officer is saying, I know the law or I know the policy, I don't agree with it, and I'm going to do my own thing. It's not necessarily, or I don't see it as a mistake that an officer makes, but it's really an intentional decision that that officer is making to not follow the proper policy or law. That's what we've interpreted it to mean, I should say. The two seventeen did not create a definition of bad faith. But I want to assure the officers that, you know, everyone does make mistakes in their job and that does not necessarily equate to bad faith. So at the end of the day, the municipality has to make that determination. And if they find that the officer acted in good faith, then they're going to completely, they must indemnify the officer. And if the officer acted in bad faith, then the municipality has to cover anything over the twenty-five thousand dollars. That is the responsibility of the officer. Next slide, please. So I just kind of break it down and get some examples. So a good faith example is the officer is alleged to have used excessive force. An internal investigation is done and reveals that the officer did not violate any policy or procedure. Then the municipality, if there was a judgment, the municipality would indemnify for the entire amount of the judgment because they made the determination that the officer acted in good faith. If the officer acted in bad faith, so let's, there's two ways this could go. If the officer acts in bad faith, uses excessive force against a suspect, against policy and procedure, then the officer is, where the officer would pay the either five percent or up to twenty-five thousand dollars of any judgment. And then the municipality would pay the remaining amount of the judgment. Again, keeping in mind, there's no cap to that, what that judgment would be. And then example three is if an officer assaults a suspect, these are just, again, kind of an extreme example, and is charged criminally, the officer is convicted of the offense. If the officer acts in bad faith and is criminally convicted of an offense, then the municipality is not responsible for any of the judgment unless they can show that the municipality somehow was, basically was a part of the officer's decision. Maybe we knew what was going on and didn't do anything about it, that sort of thing. So it would be an extreme case. So most cases, if an officer is criminally convicted of an offense, then the municipality would not be responsible for any of the judgment. Not to be a downer here, but we can look at cases and say, yeah, obviously, this happened, this assault happened, and it's criminal, and the DA decides to charge it. That doesn't necessarily mean we will get a conviction. In my prior years of prosecuting, I could prosecute the best case and still the defendant would be found not guilty. So just because we believe that a criminal charge is appropriate does not equate to a conviction. So sometimes that can be frustrating. And if there isn't a conviction, then the municipality would be on the hook for anything over the twenty-five thousand dollars. Next slide. I think, you know, we've been, now that we've had some time to reflect on two seventeen, I think, you know, the, looking at the intent of what the legislation was doing is, is holding the municipalities more accountable and pretty much for almost all actions of officers. And the result is for the municipalities increasing costs of litigation, judgments, and settlements. That really is what I think we'll see as an effect of two seventeen. But again, the intent behind it, I think, is let's go after the municipalities to make sure that they're hiring, training, and supervising their employees. And also the municipalities probably have more money to pay out the claims. That is the end of the presentation. Does anyone have questions? You're broke down, yeah?
I mean, you mentioned about going after municipalities. I mean, they're also personally going after officers, which is something that was never done before. Where, I mean, they're personally financially liable. I mean, people who made these policies, they didn't change that for themselves. I mean, so I think that's at least fair to point out unless I'm wrong on that.
No, I think that's a good point. What I would say is that prior to two seventeen, if an officer acted in bad faith, they would have been responsible for an entire judgment. So they would have been responsible prior to two seventeen for much, arguably much higher amount than twenty-five thousand dollars. Because if an officer in the past acted, if we felt they acted in bad faith, we as a municipality would not have covered that behavior outside the scope of their employment. So arguably, they would have been held to, you know, had a much higher amount that they had to pay. Now, what it does is creates this new individual cause of action in state court. So against the officer that didn't exist before.
Maybe expand on that because that's the part where I think it's, if I understand right, that it's changed. So, I mean, because something changed that they took qualified immunity out of the picture. And if I'm hearing you right, that's the state piece. So there was different protection that they don't have now. So what does that functionally look like? I'm trying to understand that piece of it.
Sure. So before two seventeen, the officer could have still been individually sued. But that suit's going to be in federal court for a nineteen eighty-three claim. And they still, as of today, have qualified immunity for any federal case. So what we're talking about with two seventeen only applies to this new claim. So prior to two seventeen, the person, the plaintiff, the person who's suing could only pursue a constitutional rights claim in federal court against an officer, and the officer had qualified immunity. Now, the plaintiff could decide if they want to sue the officer in federal court or this new state claim. So there's a whole new cause of action that is available to the plaintiffs. And it's going against specifically just the officer. It's not a claim that can be brought against the city. And under that claim, they do not have qualified immunity. So if they do act in bad faith, they are responsible for up to twenty-five thousand dollars. If they act in bad faith tomorrow and it's in federal court, then this doesn't apply. But if they act in bad faith and it's in state court, they are responsible potentially for up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Does that explain it? So there's still two ways you could go to sue an officer. And one would be federal court, and that hasn't changed. That still has the qualified immunity. The new claim with state court does not have that qualified immunity, but anything over twenty-five thousand dollars, the city has to cover unless the officer is criminally convicted.
Yeah, it makes sense. And I think it's good for people to understand that there was, I mean, so much of what went on at that point in my mind, from what we were hearing from legislators down at the State House, and the way that it was portrayed was that somehow if an officer acted in bad faith before, that they weren't going to, there was no way that they were getting held accountable, which was not reality. And to that point, so when you say that there's the state and federal, could they do both potentially, or is it one or the other?
I think, and Mr. Franklin, you may have to chime in on this. I believe, and it's still, even though we're two years out, it's still fairly new. There, we haven't seen a lot of, because civil cases take a really long time to get through. But I do believe they can sue in federal and state court. But I'm not sure how that plays out. I think they can, I think they can, though.
I think that if we were defending two claims like that, we would attempt to defend on the basis that they had already litigated that issue. So I don't know that they would succeed to go twice on the same set of facts.
I appreciate that. So the other thing, and you kind of alluded to it, that I think I've heard, and it doesn't sound like it has, is, you know, going through this, being that we're trying to determine what it was or how it'll play out. I heard the term a lot, nobody wanted to be the test case. And I don't know that we're past that point yet. And I mean, there were other areas of this. And I know you phoned in on one area, but one other one that I've heard substantial concern about that I think has hurt people wanting to be police officers is around post. And who's going to determine that? And who's going to say, you know, you acted in bad faith, we're going to take your post away? And, you know, what avenues there are for that? So I don't, and I don't know if any of that's changed. But those are the two that I know I heard a lot about. You know, nobody wanting to be the test case for those situations.
I agree. And I think that the two, for me, my two biggest concerns for the law enforcement officers from two seventeen are the, is the post piece of it, which did get cleaned up a little bit with the twelve fifty. And then just the new definition of use of force. Those are two areas that I think are still concerning for law enforcement. But that would be a whole nother presentation.
I appreciate, for one, the adding clarity because I think, you know, again, the unknown has been what's caused substantial concern and challenges, I think, in law enforcement in Colorado.
Do we know how many officers we lost when this whole thing came down?
It's beginning of twenty twenty, well, after the pandemic, so early twenty-one, we've lost fifty-five officers. Some of them are retirements, but as a whole, fifty-five of them.
And so for the current ones that were here, their career, and adding new ones, how do we, how do you educate them about this whole thing and what good faith means now to them and what they're liable for?
I think, I think just this in any presentation, when they start, when they start the academy, when they're done with the academy, and then trying to translate into real-world scenarios. I guess one of the things that I would impress upon them, Mayor, is that in going through the cases that, with Jeff Betts, prior to his departure, before he retired, going through the previous cases that we've had with the city where officers have been sued, there has been one case that we are aware of where we, as the agency, would have found that officer acting in bad faith. So out of the thirty-plus years of litigation, it was one case. And he's currently sitting in the Department of Corrections for sexual assault. Not our proudest moment by any means, absolute travesty. But it's one case, and that's, that's the case. Outside of that, everything else would have been deemed in good faith because the officers were acting like they should have been. Really, where the bad faith comes in is, is that. It is, I know there's a policy, I know there's a law, and I'm absolutely disregarding it. And I'm doing what I want as it relates to that. So it's that education piece in bringing it into reality of this is what we have experienced over the last thirty-plus years, and this is where we're at. And quite honestly, part of that is in trust and faith. Here's what we have done in the past. We have council, we have city manager support all the way through.